Good evening and welcome to the Smyrna Town Council Workshop for June to set our meeting for July. Before we move into our items for discussion, I'm going to ask Mark Adkins to do our prayer, and Jimmy Stitt, will you do our pledge for us?
Everyone will stand, please.
Father, we've come to you this evening, Lord, just thankful for another day, thankful for everything that you give to us in our lives that we take for granted. Lord, we ask that you continue to watch over the people that keep our town safe, that keep our town secure, that keep our town looking good. We pray for leadership and guidance as we make decisions that affect the town. Lord, this last week, we had some pretty heavy storms here in Smyrna, and it could have been a lot worse than it was. There was no loss of life, there was nobody, they got injured in a bad way. Father, we just thank you for that protection. Lord, we also thank you for those employees that went out there and cleaned up the downed trees and kept working hard to get things back to normal. We ask that you go with us now, lead, guide, and direct us in all we do. We pray these things in your name, amen.
Amen. Your flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item for discussion is consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 14.00. Mitch, how are you? Wonderful.
Hi, Mayor, Council. This is an annexation, property annexation and property reference to Rutherford County Tax Map 54, parcel 1402. This is going to put in writing that the town will provide the services to this property except for CUD, which will provide the water service to this property. Having in contact with CUD on this as far as the fire flow is concerned, they sent an email over that said the existing water system infrastructure cannot supply the required fire flow at 1,000 gallons per minute at 20 PSI at the above referenced location. Once the two water main improvement projects, which one is under construction and one in design currently, CUD is working on to complete the fire flow requirement will be met, and that is expected to be finished about spring 2021. And that is it.
Okay. Questions for him on this? Okay. We'll move on to item two, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 14.02, containing approximately 13.81 acres. It's requested by Sean Collins on behalf of Jim W. and Linda McLameric. I don't know, but property is located at 4,200 Morton Lane. This is a second reading, and it's the property we just discussed. Anything to add?
No, it's about it. Same, requested for R3 zoning, 4,200 Morton Lane. About it.
Questions?
I do have questions.
Sure.
And since this is just zoning and services, I guess that, it's my understanding that if there was any plans submitted, that it's got a two-year limit. Is that right?
As far as approval from Planning Commission?
Right.
It's got a year approval.
Okay. So they won't move forward, since they can't really start until 2021, we shouldn't expect any plans for this for a couple of years?
It's potential, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure. I knew there was something that expired, but I didn't know it wasn't this. Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
If by chance they were to get water out there, they could start there, right?
If they did, yeah. Well, CUD said spring 2021 is their best estimated approximate date of completion for that first project.
Okay. Item three is consideration of a resolution in memorandum of ordinance 19-21 relative to the annexation, R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 14.02. That's our housekeeping item. Item four is consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for properties located on Tax Map 20, parcels 19.01, 37.00, 38.00, 40.00, 41.00, 43.00, 46.01, 48.00, and 52.00. And Tax Map 26, parcels 18.00, 20.00, 22.00, 22.01, 23.00, and 24.01, as well as approximately 2.4 miles of existing right-of-way of Jefferson Pike.
Yeah, this is a plan of services for property located at 840 and West Jefferson Pike and Hickory Grove Road. Town will provide the property, the, all the prospective utilities for this area once it is annexed, and that is it.
Out of curiosity, has anyone gotten any emails or calls about this property at all?
We don't.
The only thing I've gotten has been positive for landowners that live close to or on the road going towards it since our last meeting, so I was just curious to see if anybody else had gotten anything.
People about that were just as excited about Jefferson Pike getting attention finally, and this kind of makes good sense to them, so.
Agreed.
Mayor, just a point of observation on this. As Mitch said, we would be supplying the utilities, those utilities would be encompassed when Jefferson Pike expansion is done, so not immediately.
Exactly what I was about to ask.
Yes.
They get their water from CUD?
No, we actually have water out there now. We're going to be upgrading that line, but the sewer and the gas won't be out there until the road widening is done, so.
Do we have water on the way to 840?
Just as we're upgrading the line, right.
As in a side question, Harbor Isles and such as that, I mean, they'll be able to tap onto the sewer as it goes by and such as that, if?
If they annex.
If they annex, right. Yes.
How does that work if it's a neighborhood and only certain ones want to?
Depending on where they're located. If they're, yeah, it'd be individual tracks, so if they're at the back and they're the only one, they would have a pretty, pretty unsurmountable, daunting task to get the sewer back there. It would, it would really behoove them to work as a neighborhood.
Okay.
When it's said that.
Like, oh, they've been here, right?
Yeah.
Is that something, when something like that's going to happen, do we send letters or anything, letting the neighborhood know that that is an option? We've probably not had that discussion, but maybe we need to talk about that.
That's something we could look at, but, you know, right now, the focus would be on the annexation of the road and getting the utilities to 840.
But I think we ought to think about that, and how do we inform them?
I had a conversation with a resident of Harbor Isles, and they didn't indicate that they knew of anybody having any septic problems.
Right.
So, you know, until that happens, they're not going to step up.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. Item five is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PUD zoning of properties located on Tax Map 20, parcels 19.01, 37.00, 38.00, 40.00, 41.00, 43.00, 46.01, 48.00, and 52.0. And Tax Map 26, parcels 18.00, 20.00, 22.00, 22.01, 23.00, and 24.01, containing approximately 396 acres. It's requested by Michael Hollingshead. The properties are all along West Jefferson Pike and Hickory Grove Road. The Planning Commission also recommended the annexation of approximately 2.4 miles of the existing right-of-way of West Jefferson Pike. This also is a second reading.
Yes, this is for the previously mentioned annexation request. The proposed zoning for this would be PUD. It should be a mix of, sorry, the support, the land use plan would support a mix of low-density, single-family residential, commercial, office, retail, multifamily residential, light industrial development. Once again stating the town will provide all services upon annexation once the road extension and widening is completed. There is an existing single-family residence on two of these requested parcels. Proposed PUDs for a mix of office, retail, neighborhood services, and industrial uses, including the rock quarry, which would be located just south of the existing rock quarry that is currently out there off of Hickory Grove. The PUD pattern book is also in your packets if you have any further questions or details on that.
Don't forget, we are requiring the traffic study where the two acres that are donated for use of a town fire hall, improvements to Hickory Grove Road, a signal to be added at the intersection of Hickory Grove and West Jefferson Pike, and that the corporate office is required to begin prior to any construction beginning on the quarry site.
That's all in there.
Right. I just want to make sure that the public understands that those things are required.
The light at Hickory Grove and Jefferson, that's actually in the Jefferson Pike widening project. That's, that's separate from, from the development.
Right. Okay. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, we'll move on to item six, which is consideration of a resolution in memorandum of ordinance 19-30 relative to the annexation, PUD zoning of properties located on Tax Map 20, parcels 19.01, 37.00, 38.00, 40.00, 41.00, 43.00, 46.01, 48.00, and 52.00. And Tax Map 26, parcels 18.00, 20.00, 22.00, 22.01, 23.00, and 24.01, and the right-of-way of West Jefferson Pike. That is our item that is required by the state to be voted on, so we'll make sure to put that on the agenda. Item seven is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 54, parcels 14.01, containing approximately 6.14 acres. It's requested by Sean Collins to go from R1 to R3. The property is located at 4,150 Morton Lane, and this also is a second reading.
Mayor, Council, this is a, this is the property located adjacent to the previously mentioned property first on your agenda tonight. This is being requested to go from R1 to R3, located at 4,150 Morton Lane. The land use plan would support medium-density residential, and surrounding zoning is R1, R3, and the PRD of Cedar Hills and RN in Rutherford County. Planning Commission recommend approval of this request, 540 against.
Questions or comments on this?
Does this have the same water issues of spring of 21?
Yep, 2021.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to item eight, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 33, parcel 39.00, containing approximately 2.82 acres. It's requested by Jim Davis to go from R3 to C2. The property is located 11819 Old Nashville Highway, and this is a second reading.
Mayor, Council, this is a rezoning request from R3 to C2 at 11819 Old Nashville Highway. Land use plan support office, retail, multifamily residential mix in this area. Surrounding zoning is consists of R3, R6, C2, and the PRD of Villages of Hazelwood. There is an existing single-family residence on this parcel. Planning Commission recommend approval of this request, 540 against.
Questions on this? Okay, we'll move on to item nine, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 27P, Group B, parcel 29.00, containing approximately 55 one-hundredths of an acre. It's requested by Justin Grandstaff to go from R1 to C4. The property is located at 400 Hazelwood Drive, and this is a second reading as well.
Mayor, Council, this is a rezoning request for 400 Hazelwood Drive from R1 to C4. Land use plan support downtown development in the area. The surrounding zoning is R1, R2, C2, and C3, and there is an existing single-family residence on this parcel. Planning Commission recommend approval of this request, 540 against.
Questions on this one? Okay. We will move on to...
Actually, have you heard anything, what they plan to do with this?
Yeah, it's some kind of a salon-type use.
So I assume when it comes to planning, that there'll be like buffers and stuff that y'all require? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So you can go get your hair did. Steve.
It doesn't take long.
Oh, it doesn't?
No.
Okay. Item 10 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Rockwell relative to technical support for the water treatment plant, programmable logic controllers. Hi.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
Good. This is annual technical support agreement for the PLCs, and what they do is they allow for programmable settings through SCADA to kick the pumps on and off, run their speed and duration, and this is year one. We had went through three years previously, so we did a new agreement with Rockwell.
Questions on this? This is a new item, the other stuff we, kind of second reading stuff, so we'd already heard, but any questions or comments?
This is all budgeted?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item 11 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Clark Engineering and Utility Solutions relative to the cathodic, cathodic, cathodic protection survey troubleshooting for the gas department. I wanted to say catalytic, that's usually your word. So, cathodic.
Yes. We've been looking for several years for a company to do the cathodic protection survey, which is where we have to put current on our steel gas mains to protect them from corrosion. Not had a whole lot of luck, so this, this company has come along, and we're going to give them a shot this year, and see. This is something that is required by T-Puck for us to do every year in annual maintenance, so it is a requirement.
Questions for Mike on this?
Is this a new company you're trying, you said?
Yes, this, they have not done this for us before, so this will be someone new for us, we're going to give a shot to and see how they do. We haven't been real pleased with the last few we've had in here, so we're moving on to someone else.
I don't know all the things about gas that y'all probably do, but am I the only one that seems a little nervous about electricity being added to a gas line?
It's very low voltage.
It seems like a spark and gas.
What you want to be worried about is if we don't have that current on this steel line.
Okay, all right. I'm just saying, it sounds scary, I was just saying.
Item 12 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Dan Weaver Services relative to the water leak survey.
Yes, ma'am. This, last year was year three for Dan Weaver for the water leak services, so we rebid this June the 12th, and Dan was the low bidder again.
Questions for Mike on this? Okay. Item 13 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the following contracts relative to the materials for gas, water, and sewer. Water and sewer vendors are Core and Main, National Meter Automation, Southern Pipe, GNC Supply, United Systems and Software, Ferguson Waterworks, and Fortaline. The gas vendors are Caretest, Equipment Controls, GNC Supply, Honeywell, Elster, American Meter, Ed Young Sales, Chris George Sales, United Systems and Software, Richards Manufacturing, and Esperitech. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. This is our annual bid of materials, where we get locked-in pricing to try to keep the cost down on the materials we have to buy for gas and water sewer maintenance.
Questions for Mike on this? Okay, we'll move on to item 14, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Judy Construction Company relative to the wastewater treatment plant expansion.
Right. This is the one we've been waiting on, so, you know, we finally made it here, open bids. Judy Construction was the lowest and best bidder. Jerome Dempsey is here, in case you guys have any additional questions for him. We had six, is that right, six bidders, Jerome? Six bidders, very competitive bids, and we feel like Judy will do us a good job. This is a three-year project, and there's, there's a lot of work to be done here.
Yeah. Questions for Mike on this? It's probably one of the biggest projects we've done in quite a while.
If I'm not mistaken, it's the biggest single financial project the town's ever done.
So, pretty important. Questions for Mike on this? Okay. Item 15 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute change order number one with Rosso Constructors LLC relative to the Potomac Place Extension Project. Tom, how are you?
Good, thank you very much, Mayor, Council. Yes, this is, there's two change orders. Conole project, this is change order number one with Rosso Constructors on the Potomac Place project. This includes a deduct for the storm sewer, as well as an addition for additional borrowed material on the project to bring in some additional rock to bring the road up to proper grade.
Questions for Tom? Item 17 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Randy Button and Associates relative to the appraisal services for Phase One and Two of the Master Storm Water Project.
This is, basically what we have to do is, for the Master Storm Water Project, we are hiring Randy Button and Associates to go out and appraise the 14 different tracks on the property, so that we can make an offer to the property owners to be able to get the drainage easements for this project. He'll be providing the appraisal services, and then later on, we're probably going to be bringing another contract forward with Deborah Reiman for the negotiations on this as well.
Questions for Tom?
I think we missed number 16.
Oh, sorry. They looked so similar. I know, I noticed y'all looking at each other while, what are, what are they looking at each other like that for? Okay, so 16, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute change order number two with Rosso Constructors LLC relative to the Potomac Place Extension Project.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Council. This is actually for a, the total on this change order is actually a deduct of about $26,000. There's some additional funding for undercutting and bringing in fill material for that, for the project, because we hit some bad soils, we have to undercut for that, and then we did some replacement on some concrete barriers to some barrels for protection on the job site, and we're able to save some money on that end.
We for sure don't want to miss a deduct. Okay. So now we'll move on to item 18, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with SEC Engineering relative to the engineering design services for the Genie Lane Extension Project.
Yes, we had been discussing the three different options for extending Genie Lane from Wolverine to the new Potomac Place road going in, and I looked at three different options. This option was selected as being the most optimal with putting a roundabout at the intersection of Genie and Wolverine, and extending Wolverine to, I'm sorry, extending Genie over to Potomac Place. This cost includes the environmental investigation and the engineering design for SEC to do the work.
Did I read in there that they will submit back to us within 120 days? Is that right?
Yes.
Is that the way I understand that?
Yes.
And then we have 14 days of follow-up after that, right?
Yes.
So, four months, five months is all this will take?
You know, it'll take, it'll take a few months to go through the environmental, probably about a month or two for that, since that does not have to go through TDOT to get approval, we'll review that, and then we'll roll right into the design on it.
The reason I'm asking is if we're gonna, I'd like to have the information before we roll into next year's budget, and so that's why I'm asking. If we don't approve this till August, you know, are we going to have something by February, right?
Yeah, that's kind of what we're looking at, is having the engineering and that kind of stuff done. If you remember, in this year's budget, we've kind of put money for the engineering, and then also for the possibility of buying any property that we have to as far as the road, and then look for 2021 budget to actually fund the actual road construction. I will tell you, on top of the work that we're doing with SEC, we've had a preliminary meeting with the church out there and the property committee. That happened about a week and a half ago, so we're in communications there. The stumbling point will be is at the Wolverine intersection.
Right, front of Academy, right there.
You've got some large national brand, and they tend to be hard sometimes to pin down who you actually have to talk with, but we hope to get most of that done this year. That's, that's kind of our, our objective.
Got you.
Do we know the hydraulics of, in front of Academy there, or what?
That'll all be done with the design of the project, just to figure out how big the stormwater pond needs to be and where it needs to be moved to.
Other questions? Okay, moving on to item 19, is consideration of a resolution approving funding for nonprofit organizations for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Rex?
Mayor, Council, this is a housekeeping measure we do each year. This is a resolution stating the agency purpose and amount must be approved before any funds can be distributed to nonprofit agencies according to guidelines established by the Comptroller of the Treasury and the State of Tennessee.
Questions for Rex? Item 20 is consideration of a resolution to reimburse expenses for a future debt issue.
Yes, ma'am. Another housekeeping measure. The 2020 fiscal year budget planned for financing several capital projects with bonded debt. I've included a list of projects we budgeted to be financed with debt proceeds. We will have expenditures related to these projects before the issuance of the debt. This resolution will allow the town to legally reimburse itself for these expenditures when debt proceeds become available. And we will do this if the state revolving fund loan, if we're not able to secure state revolving fund loans.
Questions for Rex on this?
On the two Jefferson Pike line extensions, the sewer and the, and the water, if they're not going to start their work for, till '21 or '22, what, how does that work for these? Do we issue the bond, collect the money, and sit on it? What do we do with that?
We'll take a look at how the project's pursuing. It may be like we just did with the GO, we get it toward the end of the year, and it covers two years.
Got you, okay. So it's not one of these deals where there's a time constraint that we have to either buy back or use it or something? Okay.
And let me also say, in our meetings with state revolving fund, we feel pretty good that they're going to work with us.
And we have a follow-up meeting coming up.
Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Next week.
So...
We're already beginning that process.
Yeah. Okay.
One question.
Sure.
It just seems to me like I've asked this question before and have forgotten again. What is the I and I construction project? Inflow and infiltration?
I do remember now that I asked, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Item 21 is approval and authorization for check signers for the town's public funds account with First Tennessee Bank.
Yes, ma'am. Attached to our First Tennessee Bank forms authorizing check signers with a list of the town's public funds accounts, we are seeking approval and authorization for the paperwork.
Questions for Rex on this? Item 22 is consideration of a declaration of surplus items.
Your packet is a list of surplus items that need to be sold at auction. The list includes vehicles and media equipment that has been removed from service. The town seeks permission to conduct an online auction to sell surplus items. The auction will be advertised in the Murfreesboro Post on the website and Channel 3. All surplus items will be sold through GovDeals, an online auction company, and there's also, this looks like a pretty good sale, there's some pistols, rifles, shotguns, lawnmowers, some trucks, so check it out.
No Gucci belts.
No Gucci belts, I noticed that.
There are exercise balls and mats, all sorts of stuff. Start your Christmas shopping early. I saw it was six months to Christmas, so you can get started early.
She's baiting me.
I would not do that. Do we want to draw for our winners now, or do we want to do that at the end after reports?
Whenever you want to do it, it's fine by me.
We'll just build up the suspense.
Build up the suspense.
That's right, we'll keep the viewers watching through the reports. I'm sure there are many.
It's 321.
That's right, okay. So, we'll start with, ooh, with our reports. Jeff?
Mayor, Council, just a couple of updates. You may have seen in our weekly report, pay notices have all gone out to employees for the new pay increases for this next fiscal year, so all of our employees are aware of that. Also, we have just completed our new supervisor training, at least the development of it. It's going to be a three-day training, not full days, but three partial-day training for new supervisors that David Smith and my office has put together. It's going to be very thorough, and I'm looking forward to rolling that out to some of our new supervisors. So, those are some of the things going on in HR.
This may be questions for you all, sort of you. How was the response with the sheet, with them seeing what their pay was, along with the benefits and all that? Do you think some were surprised and didn't realize, or what was your feeling?
I can speak to the guys at Maintenance Shop. When we got the breakdown of what insurance was paid and the benefits of retirement and things like that, when they realized that, you know, they might make a $25,000 salary, but they were worth $62,000 to the town, they were really going away.
And I think that was one of, one of the things we wanted employees to see. I think sometimes, you know, you get your check, and you forget about all those other things that are important to a job, and young ones may not think about it as much as ones of us that are a little older, that are needing health insurance and retirement and those sorts of things. So, I'm glad to hear that they found it beneficial. Also want to commend Jeff and Brian in departments on the supervisor training. I think so many times in organizations, you throw somebody into that role, and they're not prepared to be a supervisor. Just because they've been a great worker doesn't mean that they would always... Just because they've been a great worker doesn't mean that they would always know, have the right answer. And so I'm glad to see that we're continuing our supervisor training. Questions or comments for Jeff? Tom?
Thank you, everyone. Just a little thing that Mark was mentioning earlier with the storm damage we had last week, want to thank all the people in the Streets and Stormwater Department for coming out Friday night and cutting up a bunch of trees and removing them from the road so people can pass through safely. We've been working this week so far with all three brush trucks, just picking up as much of that debris as we can in preparation for future storm events. So if we haven't gotten to your area yet, please be patient. We are out there with all the brush trucks going, fully manned, and we're gonna get to your area as soon as we can to pick up the storm damage and any other limbs that might have been cut down before or after that. A little bit about Weekly Road Projects going on. Weekly Lane Swan Drive, guys are out there. These projects have been set back a little bit because of the rain that we had. They're grading out right now in preparation for paving. I anticipate paving to start sometime late July, unless it gets pushed a little bit more because of the rainfall. Potomac Place Extension has been pushed back a little bit because of rain. Right now, they're scheduling to do the curb work next week, and they'll be getting ready to put some more rock down and ultimately pave that out. Ena Springs West Extension, Milton City Electric has been installing poles. They put, they put all the new poles in place. They're putting guy wires in in preparation to run some, move their wires, put their wires on the new poles. Next, and we've been coordinating with AT&amp;T, Zio, and Comcast as well about following up behind Milton City Electric to move their poles so that the contractor can get out there and start finishing grading and paving out Ena Springs West. That's about all I got.
Can, sorry, real quick, can you speak to, I saw a couple posts on Facebook this week about the paving or work going on there at Weekly Lane. Of course, it was happening, you know, during the day, and some might complain about traffic backup, et cetera. Can you talk a little bit about how we work with these companies and ask them to avoid, you know, rush hour times and stuff like that? What times they usually do pave, don't pave, that kind of thing?
You know, we can either do the paving at night, which adds to costs and adds to a potential public safety, a safety for the people working out there as well as people driving through there. As far as working with the contractor on it, we do have a CEI on the project who oversees their work and tries to make sure that things get done in a safe manner. We do coordinate as much as we can with the companies that do have driveway connections out there. I've had several calls and emails regarding some blocked roadway, so I immediately contact the contractors to make sure that things are moved out of the way so they can get larger vehicles in and out, because that has been an issue with a couple of the commercial industries out there. But we just try to maintain good communications with my, between myself, the contractors as far as what my expectation is, so that people can get in and out of their business as well as just sometimes when things slip up, the business is contacting me directly.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is, you know, we said when this fall started, you gotta be patient. Improvements are coming, and when it's done, it's gonna be really nice. But that means we may have to go down to one lane or block the road for a few minutes to get vehicles and the equipment around, so appreciate it.
And Steve, I think it's a great point. One other thing that I would say too is, you know, especially on road projects where we're dealing with gravel and rock base and then asphalt, sometimes we're limited to when we can do that work because those businesses that provide the supplies are not open. You know, sometimes it's really easy to think, well, why don't they do that at midnight when there's no traffic out there? Well, you can't get asphalt at midnight sometimes. You know, when you see some of the large interstate projects, some asphalt plants will stay open for a project of that magnitude. When you're talking about the shoulder of the road and adding a turn lane, they're not staying open to produce asphalt for us for those smaller jobs. So sometimes it's a faction of when we can get the materials and actually get the work, you know, done. So we have to work with our schedules.
Understood, okay. Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Rex?
May local sales tax was one million, one hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars. That gives us a year-to-date surplus of a hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars. The May state share tax was five hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars, which gives us a year-to-date surplus of forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. We closed the twenty million dollar bond sale Monday. First Tennessee Financial Capital Markets was low bid at two-point-five-one-nine-two-three-six percent. We had nine bidders. The difference between first and second was point-zero-zero-zero-four-four-six. Some other bidders that people may be familiar with was Morgan Stanley, JP Morgan, and Citigroup. Our bonds were definitely in high demand. So, we are, we've had our auditors in this week, Monday through Wednesday, and that's for our financial audit that the comptroller requires each year. And we are also preparing for our year-end at June thirty.
I just want you all to know how complimentary they were of the town and the financial situation that the town is in. They could not have enough good things to say. So they were pleased, which in turn, we were very pleased as well.
Yes, ma'am. I'm also glad to see that sales tax is coming in a little above our estimates, just a little, but still a lot above, which helps keep property tax low, so.
Amen.
Glad to see that. Keep shopping local, right, H.G.?
That's right.
I woke him up, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Information Services has been particularly busy. I really have to give a big kudos to Patty, who's kind of my right arm. She is about to become a grandmother, and so she is trying to wrap up as much stuff as she can early with our upcoming new fiscal year, trying to get that ahead of schedule by about two months' worth. So she's been extremely busy, and I have to give her a big hand for that. On other things, we are working with Public Works Department with the ITS project, and I've got a meeting with other IT directors in the county regarding fiber access for that coming up on the tenth. Been working with the state on what they'll provide with the I-24 corridor project to try and smooth out some of the traffic flow on I-24 through this area. And so with our normal stuff and some of the new, unique things, we've been rather busy lately.
Questions for Robert? Thanks. Mitch?
The Planning Department's getting ready for our Planning Commission meeting next week Tuesday. Normally is on Thursday, but due to the holiday, it has been moved to the second. We have a couple bigger projects on the agenda for next week. We have a rezoning request to a PRD between the Cedar Hills and Amerton subdivisions with two-hundred-and-four lots. Another rezoning request to PRD on a property that you all approved for annexation a couple, last month, I believe, further up on Rocky Fork, Homaville, for a hundred and eighty-two lots. We have a also proposed hotel to go on the Potomac Place Extension on the corner of Genie and Potomac, five stories with a hundred and two rooms. That is all we have.
Questions? Mike?
Yes, ma'am. Just a little bit more about the wastewater plant. Once Council does approve the item on the agenda, it will go to SRF for approval. That process will take roughly two to three weeks. By SRF guidelines, we do have to be under construction by the end of August, so this is gonna move downhill pretty quickly from this point. And again, this is a three-year project. We do also have a couple of letters that Emily Kelly's working on for us to request additional funding for the plant and for Jefferson Pike. So I hope to have those by now, but I haven't gotten them yet, so I'm sure she's working on them, and we'll, we'll get those submitted very soon to see if we can get some additional funding for both those projects.
Great. Questions for Mike? Jimmy?
Mayor and Council, thank you. First off, IDC celebration for Independence Day coming up July third, five to nine-thirty. We'll have activities again at Lee Victory Park and again down at Smyrna Outdoor Adventure Center. Thanks in advance to all the departments and volunteers. I know just about everybody up here has been involved. Good support from the whole town that helps us put this event on. I think you guys might cover that in your announcements as well. Jefferson Springs Greenway, I know Mike presented a change order to y'all back in November for the amount of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and five dollars and twenty-five cents. I'm happy to report that the final total contract amount resulted only in twelve thousand, forty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents of that hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and five and a quarter. So we, that's where the trail was pumping, we had to dig it out, but we saved a lot of money on the top code and things as we put that in, so. Park Advisory Board, we recently discussed and prioritized future greenway routes and connections based on the latest bike and pedestrian plans throughout the town. Rotary Soccer Park Annex Lighting, I know we keep saying a few more weeks, but the weather keeps hindering us a little bit. We are just probably just a few more weeks. We're nearing completion. We're waiting for the transformer to be installed, and then we'll connect the wiring. The next phase of that would be to install the walkways and pedestrian bridges between the fields that are in the ditch lines now. And then, of course, with the new budget year, we'll do some design and building of the restrooms and that pad up there around that facility. Cedarstone Park, the stone installation is taking place on the sports fields. That started this week, so they finally got the first field dug out. Sportsfield lighting installation is underway, so the folks that are doing soccer are also in town, and they're knocking that out as well. And then, of course, general construction continues. If you've been out there, you can see the parking lot taking shape. The light poles are in concrete, but you can see the sidewalk all the way around there. So it's really, you can actually see the footprint a little bit better now, so it's really coming along. Coos Memorial Phase Two, it's mostly complete except for the interior prau. We're still having some trouble getting the right drivers for the LED lighting up there. They think they have that worked out, so we just have to come back and install that. And then we also have to do the sponsorship light boarding back on the back planter. Nathan has been out of town on vacation, and so when he gets back this next week, it'll either be the week of Fourth of July, or we'll do it the following week. So we'll do that when Nathan returns. If you've been down Nolan Drive, you can see a lot of activity going on there. The contractor started removing a lot of that mulch today, as well as there's a lot of trucks coming in, putting down the rock. They've put the pipe in right there along our current Nolan Drive, putting that pipe in and the rock that's going in there. Our staff, we started hauling out dirt yesterday. There was a lot of topsoil that wasn't accounted for on that job, and we're gonna keep it. And so we're, we're kind of stockpiling that so we can keep it in as really good topsoil. And then we also, if you've noticed, we started clearing the underbrush like we did out at Sharp Springs Park. We've also done it at Cedarstone, and so wanted to make everybody aware of that. We're not taking down a bunch of trees. We're getting a lot of that just scrub, prevent, and things like that that are down there, anything four inches larger state. And so we're in the process of clearing that, excuse me, clearing all that underbrush as well. The Depot, we're waiting on the final plans to send to Steve Smith, and then we've also got the benches ordered already, so that's, that's in the works, and that'll be coming along.
Questions for Jimmy?
What about the improvements at Volunteer Park? Since they kind of have to coincide with the opening Cedarstone, I just wondered if you got a timeline on when those will start, since we're between seasons? And if we wait till November, then it may be too wet and...
The conversation I had with Mike on that, we're working on some engineering. In fact, I think Jerome is gonna help us with some of that. So we've got to get all the engineering done before we can start work. But the plan will be to have all of that work coincide with the actual opening. With Cedarstone, we're hoping to open by the end of this year.
I think he's planning some playdates in the fall.
We hope to possibly have some playdates in the fall, but the actual leagues won't take place until next spring.
Won't start till spring. Right, so I'm just worried about the changes at Volunteer Park. If they don't happen right now, while the leagues are not playing.
We're working towards that.
How would you do that once fall starts, you know?
Working towards it. I know it's in the book, so it's, yeah.
We're working towards that. We just got to get the engineering done so we know exactly what has to be done.
Yeah, unfortunately, with the leagues playing there, you're gonna have, you know, October to, or August and October, you're not gonna be able to do anything, or it's gonna be hard, because they're gonna be using them.
Other questions? Hal?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and Council, I wanted to let the public be aware that our Drive Chip and Putt qualifier is on July the eleventh. The deadline for signing up is July the twelfth, boys and girls seven to fifteen years old. We are one of five statewide regional qualifying sites. The kids that qualify here will go on to the state qualifier, and then they move on to, in the spring, in April, to play at Augusta. We actually had one that qualified at our site this past year that was, made it, the twelve-year-old boys made it to Augusta. He didn't, he didn't win, but he made it all the way to Augusta. We'll have about two-hundred-and-fifty contestants at that, and this is the fifth year in a row that we've hosted this qualifier. It's a pretty, pretty big event. The range and the putting green are covered up from eight AM to about three PM, and they come from everywhere, Alabama, Kentucky, and these kids come down to try and qualify.
Is there a forty-eight-year-old age bracket I could play in?
I need volunteers.
Sit over my mouth. Get with me later. I think it'd be fun.
Oh, that's neat, yeah, I see it. We do a thing for Channel Three every year. John comes out with his crew, and we put it on Channel Three.
Chief?
Mr. Mayor, Council, we are ready for Wednesday. We are holding our, got our permits and permission yesterday in the mail, email, excuse me. I'd also like to thank Mr. John Black and Airport Authority for the help they give us on, for Independence Day. Another item is the County Fire Department went to the Christie Houston Foundation to ask for a grant for personal protective equipment. And I would like to thank Mr. Hercules for his support and time during that process. We were awarded it, a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, and the town should see about a little over fifty-eight thousand dollars that, in funding that we can use toward personal protective equipment. So I'm very thankful to the Christie Houston Foundation for that.
Christie Houston does a lot of great things for our community, and we're always very appreciative. Sad that you all even have to have that equipment, but glad that they stepped up for us.
Yes, ma'am.
In regards to Wednesday, people just need to, just like just now, we've had little pop-up showers show up, so it may be late in the day if we have to change to our rain date, which is on Friday. So everybody just be patient, and we will, it'll go on unless something comes up, but we will let everyone know.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Diane?
As of today, we've issued twenty-nine new business licenses, and today I printed out the SITUS report, which we have access to through Tintap, and contacted the assessor's office. They've got a list of all of our personal property taxpayers, and staff is comparing those against our business tax rolls, hopefully to find those that do not have a license with us. So we're working on that, and that'll be a long process.
Great. Thank you, ma'am. Brian?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I have just a few things I'd like to share with you. One is, you may not or may be aware of a company called H3ARC, which works with the homeless in the communities. We actually have one of our own, Shirley Key, that serves on the executive board from the Police Department, and I received an email this week of kudos to Ms. Key and some of the work she does. And I don't have to say much about Shirley and the work she does. Most of you know the passion she has to really be a servant heart, and she does a great job representing the town and being on that committee. But one of the other things that I want to share with you is, as you know, the 2020 census is coming up, and the ARC group has been hired by the census group to be part of the group that goes out and actually does some of the count. So we're excited about that, that maybe they can help us get into some of the houses and that don't respond to the cards that, for some reason, and get a good count. Every person in that census means dollars back to our community through the census. So I know it's been said, but I also want to say thank you to the Smyrna Fire Department, Smyrna Police Department in the streets with last weekend, on Friday night and Saturday with what we had with the storms, even to the extent that you may have noticed. Here's some of the work going on. We had trees down in our own parking lot. We had trees all over town. We had about five streets, I think, chief, that were actually impassable, that we were able to get back open. By about ten-thirty Friday night, everybody was back up and running, and I happened to have the pleasure of being out there and witnessing some of our folks at work. And I just can't tell you how, how nice it is to hear the camaraderie and the working attitude of our people to say, hey, what can we do next? How can we help? Concern for the citizens. So I just want to say thank you to those three groups and all the work that they did. Also, Milton Tennessee Electric. Those guys, they had a tough night that night, and we had power outages. I know the Police Department was on a generator for over two hours, so appreciate the work that they do and the partnership we have with them and the community. We talked about Boat Day a little bit, and we're gonna have the drawing here in a few minutes, but had the opportunity to go out to Boat Day. out to Boat Day, 321. And we know there was a few people that showed up that didn't get counted, that maybe didn't fill out a form. I know Pat and I were there. We didn't fill out a form. But Boat Day was tremendous. You can see some of the pictures. Everybody was having a great time. We did have about a 25-minute span of having to get people out of the water because of one of these little pop-up showers, but everybody hung out and just enjoyed the park atmosphere. And as soon as we allowed them, they were back in the water having a big time. So the Boat Day is just a nice event that appreciate the town putting on. We do have a seafood night coming up at the Town Center on July 26th. John, you're going to help me with a pop-up here, so it'll be from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. The price is $19.95 for adults, and then we have lesser price for the children and stuff. But call and make your reservation. It's going to be a great night. We will have some non-seaf food fillers for those people that maybe don't care for the sea urchin menu. We'll have some chicken, I think.
Chicken for Jerry?
Yeah, chicken for Jerry. So, but July 26th, the last time we did this, we had about 500 people show up, so get your reservations in early.
Yep.
It will be a good night. We did talk about some of the road projects tonight. I did want to share, not only with the community but with the council. We did get some less than positive news from TDOT about a week or so ago on some of the road projects that we have. And right now, it appears that Sam Ridley, the Lowry Street project and ITS Phase One and Two, those are all projects that we had in the funding cycle for TDOT and FHWA funding, the federal side of this. Those dollars have been pulled back, and they're saying they will not fund us until October. So it's basically moving those projects. We had hoped to have Sam Ridley under construction this summer. We'd hoped to have Lowry Street under construction already. We thought we were just making the turn on that one, but it looks like the federal funds will not be matched until October. So that's going to push those projects back. Like with Sam Ridley, realistically, if we get the funding in October, by the time we go out for the bids and make the bids happen, probably it'll be somewhere around January before we'll actually start that widening. But it's not great news, but I want you to know why and what's going on. But we feel very confident October, we'll get the funding. We've had conversations with TDOT. We've had conversations with FHWA. We've talked to local engineers. We've pulled out every plug that we can to try to figure out if there was a way around this. But unfortunately, the federal dollars are being rescinded, and everybody's being very cautious about obligating those dollars until October.
And it's not just us.
Not just us. This is happening across the country.
There's quite a few all over the state, all over the country.
Yeah, actually, all over the country on the federal side, so.
I guess, could you explain, because, you know, first thought pops in my head is, that's a portion of the funds. Why can't we move forward with what we have?
Well, the problem is, if you do that, you stand to lose the federal funds. They can come back and say, you know, we could change the tip page, make sure I get my nomenclature right here. I'm learning these things. We could modify the tip page and say we could move forward with a project and take the federal funds out on the project such as Sammerly Parkway. That's close to $4 million. We really are very cautious to say we could start that project and come back in October and readjust the tip page and go back and ask for the funds when we've basically taken ourselves out of the running. Possibility we wouldn't get those funds. And that would put us in a very awkward position to have such a large project started and not be able to count on those funds. Those are the three projects right now that are being affected on our side, so we just, we've talked to some legislators. We've talked to TDOT. I just think at this time, this is the right decision for us, for us to wait until October to move forward. I just don't want to risk the opportunity to lose those federal funds.
Jeff?
I'm not done yet.
Oh, sorry.
I'm delivering the bad news.
Okay.
Talked about Enon West slash Rocky Fort. One of the things that we're concerned about is the timing with these poles. We will be, Tom and I are meeting with the schools next week to try to build a plan to help them know that we're probably going to be about 30 to 45 days behind what we estimated being able to get that road open. When the schools open, it's not going to happen, but we're going to work with the schools to build a plan, so we're meeting with the principals next week. Also, I wanted to mention that we hosted a meeting yesterday with the City of Murfreesboro and the County Planning and Engineering Group. We've been doing that on a monthly basis. They came to Smyrna yesterday. We actually had a real nice meeting and tied it into the TDOT meeting that some of them attended, so that worked out very well. Also, we had a meeting about a week and a half ago with our friends in Williamson County, Franklin, Rutherford County, and Smyrna to begin to talk about a thoroughfare plan that could be looked at, that would help kind of block the roadway to look at Enon West as it could possibly, one of these days, tie into McEwen. And I will tell you that everybody came to the table very enthused to be talking about that. They're going to go back. We're going to try to circle back in about 30 days and talk about, you know, where their leadership's at in the different communities to see if that's something that we could possibly, we wouldn't be starting on a road or anything like that, but just obligating that property as a thoroughfare plan so that we don't run into what we did with Sam Ridley being blocked for that connector route. You mentioned Kristi Houston. I did want to mention one other thing, or a couple of other things real quick. Steve Dawson, who works in our codes department, had the loss of his father this last week on Friday. That's two of our employees recently that have lost parents, and I know our hearts hurt for those folks, and I appreciate prayers and concerns for those families. As you look across the table tonight, we got a few fill-ins, and they were doing a great job. It is vacation season, and we've got several folks out on vacation, but we will be back up to staff on Monday. And the last thing I want to say is kind of a point of personal privilege, and Mayor, you may bring this up, but I just wanted to say, prior to this meeting tonight, I've been here a year, and I appreciate the performance review that I was, that I received this evening from the standpoint of working with the mayor and the council. As my direct supervisors, I just cannot tell you again how much I appreciate the support and the confidence you put in me to do the job. But I'd be remiss, I know some of the directors are not here. The accolades that you shared with me about some of the work that we're doing would not happen without the directors and the employees behind them. And I just, I just want you guys to know how much and what an honor it is to work with a dedicated group of people like yourself on a daily basis that truly do this job, not for, I mean, we all enjoy a paycheck, but there's a lot more to what happens here. And the dedication to this town is contagious. And I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. And my compadre here, Jeff, he's become my confidant. We work very well together as a team, and I would just be remiss if I did not say that. But thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yes, this past Monday, I did attend the Tennessee Municipal League Conference for the attorney section of it, the Tennessee Municipal, the Municipal Attorneys of Tennessee. Also...
Did you just make that up?
Yes, on the fly. It's actually the Tennessee Municipal Attorneys Association. But you caught me because I was trying to just let that just lay. But the, I told you that I was going to do it, but we did have a successful police presentation from the legal department. Met with the supervision of the police department for the sergeants and lieutenants and corporals. And I was very pleased. They had good questions and just had a great attitude about the presentation, and I was really appreciative of them. And we'll be continuing to do that to all of the officers. But we just, Kevin felt it would be good to start with the supervisors, and I agree. I think that was a good move. I also did attend the Matlow event, and the food was exceptional that the chef had prepared. And just wanted to mention that. It was really good. And that is it.
Anything for Jeff? Raquel?
I'd like to thank all of the employees who were involved in all the storm cleanup. Looks like we may actually have to do that again. But thank you all for each of the departments that worked overtime to get that done. Also, I'd like to say that this year, Gabriel was not able to attend the fire and police camp, but I've seen pictures of it, and I think that that went very well. And I think maybe Brian, you actually went one day, and some of the other directors and the judge allowed the kids to come to see the courtroom. So I think that that's a very good event and was very well attended, and I've seen a lot of pictures and people in support of that. So I'm glad that everything went well with that.
Raquel, did you happen to see my favorite picture from that?
No, I did not.
That was the one where the chief had a mop in his hand and was actually mopping up the water?
I saw that.
We were all very impressed that he actually knew how to operate that.
There was a couple comments on Facebook about that picture, too.
Nice job, chief.
Be careful.
Okay. And lastly, I'd just like to wish everyone a safe and happy 4th of July. And I'm sure the mayor's going to talk about that as well, what our plans are. So that's all for me.
HG?
I just really wish everybody a happy and safe 4th also.
Tim?
Brian, thank you for the job you're doing. And to our supervisors and department heads, thank you guys so much. You know, I probably couldn't have been any prouder than last Friday during the storms to see the response that was out there and receive so many positive comments about what a great job we were, the town did, and how we responded so quickly. So thank you guys. Thank the employees. I know it was a long night and a late night, and a lot of folks maybe didn't even get home till the next day. So thank you for that. Happy 4th of July, and that's it.
Jerry's not with us tonight. Jerry and Trenton were cheering on Vanderbilt last night at the game, so I'm glad they got to witness that and share that together. So Jerry will be back with us. Steve?
Yep, I don't have much. Congratulations, Brian, on celebrating here. I'm glad you're here, glad to have you, and look forward to quite a few more years. To the directors and the staff, Brian said, you know, he wanted to give you guys accolades, but just if it makes you feel better, even when we had the meeting before this meeting, that was the first thing he said was, I know this is my review, but these guys are doing all the work. So it's not just something he said for the cameras. He really feels that way, and he said that behind the closed doors as well. And I appreciate all of the work that you guys do because it does reflect on all of us. If you guys don't do a good job, we're the ones that's going to get beat up daily about it. So I appreciate what you're all doing.
That's it.
Mark?
Happy Independence Day. And again, Brian, thank you for everything that you do for our town. In the years' time that you've been here, I mentioned this in the meeting before, but publicly, I'd like to say thank you because there's so many people now, you and Pat are at all the events. You've met a lot of people. You've made a lot of friends, and that's really what we try to do as well, and build community, build relationships. These people out here are the ones that help us do that. So echo what Steve said. Brian made sure that all of you were credited for his review. So when we brought Brian in to hire him a year ago, one of the things that we made a priority was our employees. That was one of the first things that everybody up here said the same thing. We want to make sure that we have somebody that takes care of our employees and looks after them and garners their respect. I think it works both ways. I know he respects you guys, and I think in turn, you probably do him as well. So thank you, Brian, for all that, and that's all I have.
Couple of things on my list. The Smyrna Independence Day celebration will be this Wednesday, the 3rd, from 5:00 to 8:00, at Lee Victory Recreation Park. The rain out date will be Friday, July 5th. We'll have music fun and food activities. There'll be inflatables, train rides provided by CNR Railroad. You can bring a picnic or buy from one of our onsite concessions and enjoy the live music featuring the Missy Garnett Band. Remember, the fireworks will start about 9:00. People always ask, but we never start the fireworks or turn off the lights until everybody is in place. And if there's anybody, any children or parents that are lost, we always make sure that we have people where they're supposed to be before we actually get the fireworks started. So be patient with us on that as well. Our Smyrna Farmers Market is open every Saturday from 8:00 to 12:00, and will run through September 14th. I would like to congratulate the Smyrna High School co-ed bowling team for winning the national championship. We had them in the other, a couple months ago for winning the state, but they went on to win the national championship. So they're going to be doing our pledge for us at the 4th of July celebration, but, you know, what a great group of ambassadors to represent the town of Smyrna, so congratulations to them. I'd like for us to put on the agenda, we have one Sister City Committee member who has resigned, so we'll be looking to fill an unexpired term ending in March of 2022. Applications can be submitted on our town website, and if you have any questions, you can call Tiffany Lawson here at Town Hall. Brian mentioned the Seafood Fest and the storm damage and Smyrna Boat Day. So I guess at this time, we are going to draw for two kayaks and a cooler. And you know what? I think Mark is more than prepared to take care of that. So Mark, I'm going to leave that to you.
We know that you have a commitment to be in.
I do have a little bit of a commitment, so I'm going to slide out, and Mark's going to take care of the rest. Happy 4th of July, and we hope to see you at Lee Victory Recreation Park.
Where are our entries?
They're in the cooler.
Before we do that, I'd just like to thank, I'd like to thank all the people who came out to be in attendance at Boat Day. So we had 321 people come out. Also, I'd like to thank the employees who volunteered, who put on this event. We have people from Finance Department, Admin, Utilities, Streets, Stormwater Department, Parks Department, as well as our high school intern was out there all day helping people getting in and out of boats safely. Also, I'd like to thank Project Wet, Coast Guard Auxiliary Group, Smyrna Outdoor Venture Center, Stones River Watershed for setting up booths out there, and the council members and the Stormwater Advisory Committee members who came out to be in attendance. And I guess at this time, if you want to, I guess what we can do is maybe draw the first two for the kayaks and then draw the third one for the cooler after that. So, and we'll let the winners know tomorrow that they won, and then next week, we'll get some pictures made at Academy Sports. I'd also like to thank Academy Sports. Every year, they've been donating one kayak. This last year, they donated two kayaks, and this year, they donated both kayaks and the cooler for someone to win. And the winner is of the first kayak?
Larry Montgomery. Larry, contact the Smyrna City Hall. Come pick up your kayak.
We'll call him.
And our second winner of a kayak is McKenna Weaver. McKenna Weaver. And you'll be contacted as well, or you can call City Hall. This is for the cooler, right?
Yes.
Chelsea Kelch. Chelsea Kelch. Same thing, you have a cooler. Congratulations to all the winners, and great event. It turned out well. I know you were in the water a little bit.
I did not get in the water.
So this is why we, this is why your job review is so well. We watch you swim. And that is all I have. So unless there's something else to come before us, are we adjourning?
We are.
We are adjourned. Thank you.